You guys got all over it, no?
No.
You see anything? Ambulance?
I did speak with, gonna call him Mr. Family, it's easier to pronounce his last name. He's given me some more solid figures for our budget meetings. Hopefully that'll help get us through. Again, you, this is a long, there's contract.
You seen the contract yet, or?
I've seen it.
Ready, Frank? Still awake?
I'm ready. You guys ready? We, we had our trip there, the Coaten there, that was a lunch cruise. Around Welsley Island, like that, and sat with all the people. The weather held on whenever we had to get off the boat, the weather was good. My whole living that made that possible. Okay, now I'm also working on food shots. And right now, I'm, I'm talking to Nancy Purdy out at Food Recovery Health Department. Because we can't get a pharmacy, because we just have a pharmacy come right to our meeting here, give them shots, and uh, it's not, they just won't do it anymore. I even tried to get the guy in Fort Martin and, you know, pop me in lunch, everything. Yeah, so anyway, so they're, they're trying to get somebody down here. And I'm going to see if they, when they do, they can get with the Purdy, when senior, they have a woman there, I'll see if they can work with them. And of course, we have our buncle on Wednesday. Let's see, and the first, the first meeting, we had Sue Dreyer come in and talk to us, she's our colleague first. And she, her biggest kick was, it's May 1st. You gotta do something about your driver's license, or you can't fly, or any place in the United States. So that's having changed, May 1st, 2023. Sue was very good. But of course, we're working on our trips again for next year. And, oh, and the officer, the agent was here on the 12th. I don't see any, other than me, I don't, well, sure, just maybe. Do you have any thoughts? I'll remember that. Okay, well, that's all I got right now, and if I think of anything else, I will feel free to interrupt, okay? And thanks again to the board for what they do for the seniors, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Water districts. I did get a phone call and an email from Ian Yearton from C2AE. He's requested a meeting with Karen and myself for the next week or so. Stated that he got the response from Kevin Cox. And they spoke internally, and they'd like to sit down and see what the board would like to do, and feels like we should be able to move forward on this.
Okay, and of course, you're going to be in communication with that committee?
I spoke with Kevin Cox, and he said he did not need to be present.
Okay.
He said to have the meeting. See how it goes, see what's proposed, and if we'd be after that, he would be available. But he said to draw him into the meeting, they'd have to bring their attorneys in. He recommended we just do it with the Water District Committee and C2AE.
Okay, how are we, are you going to be making decisions with C2AE?
We are going to be discussing if they're willing to go forward. Again, discussing the concerns we have. We're not, I mean, we can't make any decisions without the board, they're still
Right.
They're still under contract to do what they agreed to do, so
Right.
Just move forward and see how we can move forward in the best way possible.
Okay, so it sounds like you and Karen will be meeting with Ian Yearton, C2AE, in the near future to discuss what the next step might be if they were to continue with the engineers for Water District 2. And then you'll keep the board and will
Yes, we will.
And not make decisions independent of the board, but bring it back to the board. Thank you for reaching out to Kevin.
Yep, no, he said that he didn't see any need to be there at this point. Zoning Commission?
Uh, the zoning commission has been moving right along. And we did put together a tentative timeline for addressing the Wellhead Protection Overlay District. At our last zoning commission meeting, we actually said, we'll do a presentation of, like a rehearsal to one of the committees that's dedicated towards working on this draft or having input into this draft, Wellhead Protection Overlay District. And so on October 6th, we'll be presenting with Steve Winkley, he'll be there, to the Village Water Advisory Group. And remember, that consists of Mayor Jim Baceo, trustee Walt Craylon, village planning board chair, Deborah Rose, June Willef, Chair of the Town Planning Board, myself, and Karen Haas, who's the chair of the committee. I invited, I, we, zoning commission thought it made sense to invite Mr. Cool because the other committee that's dedicated or impart, we'd like input for the Wellhead Protection Overlay District. And so we invited Charlie to be at that meeting as well. What's kind of, kind of right there for us to be very aware of, we cannot have more than two town board members meeting without making an open, subject to the open meeting laws. And we're still in the practice stage of putting this draft together, we're not ready to go public with it yet. So again, we invited Charlie, and he said he's available. And Doug Miller, who is our consulting engineer, and well, I think we'll be acting on that tonight.
Well, I think that it's for our tour, too, but we'll talk about that.
Okay.
My concern is, like, we spoke. You know, this has been talked about, that this should be out in the open, I think you're fighting the vast majority of people, but it's kind of a segregated bunch of people that are getting invited. You're leaving out the vast majority of the other, the initial Wellhead Protection Committee.
Which is?
Which would be, you know.
Okay, so remember, and Charlie knows.
Yep.
Go ahead.
No, you better, you can do a better thing.
As I mentioned, so the zoning commission would like to run this draft through the two committees, the village committee, scheduled for October 6th. And then Charlie would call a meeting for, of the Town Wellhead Protection Committee for the presentation.
But you're concerned because me and Charlie are all listening.
I'm concerned, and I think this, and I've asked for it, I'd like to see a draft where you are. I think the zoning commission was taxed by the town board to do this. And now it looks like everything's being done in secret. And you're inviting these people, but you're not inviting these people, and it's not public. But it's, I'd like to see where we're at with it.
Okay, so one, one possibility, based on your concern, Scott, that you voiced to me yesterday on the phone. Perhaps what we could look at doing, and remember how I mentioned, typically, protocol would be, so we kind of envisioned the two committees, the town, village, having, seeing the presentation, making points, asking questions about it, maybe we may make some revisions, and then go to the town planning board, which is our typical protocol. But what we might consider, and then go to the town board, reverse it. Have it come to the town board at the October 24th, town board meeting, as an informational meeting. It has to be public, so then it's now out in the public. Even though it's not ready for public hearing.
And that's what, why isn't it? Why isn't this, everything, every month you say we've been working on? What, show us what you're working on, where are you at, what's, what's in it? I don't, that's what I'd like to see. I can, I don't know if anybody else, you know. Where are we at with this thing? Yeah, where to start with, where are you at?
That's what this meeting she's talking about, is to, where are we at? Where do we want to go? Is this sufficient where we're at, do we want to add to it? There's nobody being invited as a select group, it's just impossible, you didn't hang down.
Why have an open meeting, why can't you have an open meeting?
No reason saying we can't, but for the stuff that needs to be discussed at this meeting, I think what she's talking about is more of a presentation thing, it's not a fact finding, it's not the thing of that is to actually see, like you said, where are we at? A lot of people working on stuff, where's everybody at? That's what we're trying to do.
So And that's what I'm saying, is you should be reporting to the board, not, I mean, it should have been reported tonight at this meeting, not. Right.
So you're, so you're saying the presentation for the Wellhead Protection Overlay District, even though we don't believe that we're ready to present it yet? Because once you present it to the board, it's now public.
I don't, I understand you're not ready to present it to the, to present it yet, that it's not final, but I still think that the public, the board, all parties involved, should have access to it, or should be able to see it. I don't, I, it's such a big secret.
I don't disagree with you, Scott, but I don't think it's intentionally being done.
Right, if, and you look at it, as I said, you can see where we're coming from, forgetting
How many, how many people that this is going to affect, how many landlords in this overlay district?
That's partly a presentation, and not ready to, right.
Right, but how many of these landlords have been approached and have been part of this, or had any input on this? Why aren't they invited? You know?
That's because that would be part of the, when the information's put out there, and it's all together. Yeah, so we actually have the proposed, a potential amendment to our local land use regulations with the verbiage and a map. And what Mr. Winkley has put together, the hydrogeologist that we've been working with, is a slide presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, which gives some of the history of why, why are we doing this? And obviously, it's because the Village of Fairhaven reached out to the town, well, Steve Winkley, and the town to put some regulations in place to protect that water source for the Village of Fairhaven, Water District Number 2 in the town of Sterling, Fairhaven Beach State Park, as well as some users west of Fairhaven. So that's what the zoning, and then in February 2022, the town board, Sterling Town Board tasked the zoning commission, made up of three members, two planning board and myself, to work on this draft with the guidance of Steve.
And I'd say it is a member of the town board, I don't know, maybe I'm a little bit member of the town board. I would like to see where you're at with this, I would like to see a copy of this, and I think that you were, like you said, you were tasked by the town board.
Right.
I think the town board should be able to see
Before the committees that were formed, five of the
Right now, yesterday, two months ago, I asked for it. Um, I've asked for this repeatedly.
Have any landlords been contacted via this board?
No, we are not going to, that would be, once it's gone public, then we can look at getting that information out.
Why wouldn't you want their info on what, what you're doing, how that's affecting them?
We will have their info.
Not, you're saying that, that's, you're not going to present it until you have your final draft? Well, then their input be put in before the final draft?
Right, it's a matter of timeliness and how much info can we have? We're trying to get this in place as soon as possible. With the timeline that we have right now, potentially, you're looking at having this before the town board, December 19th, at the town's regular town board meeting, and the public hearing. That's what the ideal would be, to move this along, and there'll be opportunities for input.
So you're saying you're not going to present this draft to the town board in total assembly?
No, that's not what I said, let's make it real clear.
In front of the town board, isn't that what she said?
Okay, then you, okay, listen. Okay, I said initially, we were going to go to the planning board. And their planning board meetings are typically the first Thursday of the month. So we said that would be November 3rd. Okay? And then the town board, November 21st. After our conversation yesterday, and you voiced your concerns, I said, what if we, because whenever we do, town board, planning board, it's gone public. So why don't we do the presentation to the town board, assuming Steve Winkley is available at the October meeting? So I'm really, we're, we're moving it up, just because of your concern at the October meeting. And you're saying, well, why can't we do it sooner? Well, if it's a full board, then you have to, you're subject to the open meeting laws. I mean, I guess we could, if you had a special meeting and piggyback it with a budget meeting, I don't know. But those are the, that's what we're trying to do, Scott, is to move it along, so
You go to that, well, we do that every year.
Which meeting?
The meeting where we're presenting to the committees. I would think that both committees should be there.
It can't, because then you've got more than two town boards.
Then you'd have to make it open to the public, and everybody would be able to have. I don't see that problem.
I, we're not ready for that, to have a public come in and say, what have you done, why have you put this? That's why we're still gathering.
Why can't you, why can't you email the board members a copy of it?
Of what, yeah?
Of your, what you have, what you've got.
Presentation?
You told me the other day you're on draft number such and such.
Right, right, right. At the, at the meeting, October 6th, we do not intend to hand out the actual local law. Okay, draft law. We would do the presentation slideshow, which explains how that came about, gives the history behind it, the contents of it, the
If you're not, if you're not releasing the draft law, why can't you have the public there to see it before, to at least, if you're not going to incident, then I can't see anything.
Let's do that on October 24th. And make it here at the town board meeting. Assuming Steve Winkley is available, that's a big assumption. Because he's the one that, that's his area of expertise.
Do you have anything else, or?
Oh, so what I'm hearing you say is, it would not work for Doug Miller to attend the October 6th meeting because we don't have a contract.
I don't think it's totally have a contract in place, it's considered. Right, or under contract with us.
Okay.
Now, it's in the workplace, partner oversight. You guys got all the hours? It's a pad, is that something? Were you gonna step aside, or somebody else going to do the oversight?
Yeah, when I get back.
Right, and so that really is dependent upon Lisa, because she needs to have something.
Right, Karen's going to be on for a while.
Right, so that, when it works out for Lisa and Karen and I, Karen and I will review the financial records for the justice, the top layer, and tax.
Play handbook? Personnel, nothing? LWRP?
Oh, we had an open meeting, a public meeting at the end of August, had 33 attendees. Some of them in, Ryan Mankalo.
Mankalo.
Was there, and he sort of got his hands dirty with weed tissue on some of the creeks, and so was moving forward. Where it stands right now is that Karen is still waiting for New York State's review of the point, so that's the meeting.
All right, I get a motion to accept the minutes from the August 23rd regular meeting, of this period.
Wait a minute, did we skip Wellhead Protection?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Wellhead Protection.
Still have some people on vacation, hopefully they're all back. I think it was Ms. Gately, Susan, and there was, she wanted to be part of that meeting, so. Look back to
A thought would be to, assuming Steve Winkley is available October 24th, the Wellhead Protection Committee could come to the next town board meeting, it'll make your long time board meeting, but
Yeah, I'd be interested myself in catching up on where everybody is at, and what else needs to be done to finish it up.
Right. So that would have, again, it's going to be contingent on Steve, if he's available.
Now, can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the August 23rd, 2022 regular meeting?
With one minor change, which I fixed, is that I put the August 2nd, and it should be August 3rd. I'll fix that before the correction.
Okay.
Before I put it in.
With that exception.
I'll make that. On a favor.
A motion to accept the minutes from the September 1st, 2022 special meeting. I get a motion to accept the minutes from the September 8th, 2022 special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Get a motion to accept the minutes from the September 12th, 2022 special meeting. Get a motion to accept the supervisor's report from August 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Hi. Correspondents? Will discuss, Mr. Miller leader, all agreement? Any questions on any of that stuff?
Yes, I don't know if I have questions.
Sure.
But correspondence number 12. Okay, I talked to Lisa about it, and we might want to act on this. I think that's what Mr. Don Spreito was expecting, that we would act on this. Oh, number seven. Whoops, yeah, I had a comment on number seven before, correspondence number seven. The letter, questions from Pat Maxx regarding security at the well field. And I put a sticky on it and said, oh, would it make sense if the town Wellhead Protection Committee researched and made recommendations to the town board on?
Been done, no. We've talked about it.
So what do you want, Ted, should we get Ted on this? We leave it open ended, that's how it's going to end.
Right, well, when, when does it make sense for the committee to provide the recommendations?
I can do it tonight.
Right, did you, right, did the committee address these concerns? Did you see this correspondence, number seven, and you packed it to me? So I
We have, we have talked about this in our, in our meetings.
This is this would be a Fairhaven issue, though.
Well, if you want to call it a Fairhaven issue, it's Thomas Sterling drinking the water fill.
Well, it's, they own the property.
Don't want to split yours on something like this.
We don't want to do something we don't have to do.
No, but I mean, it's, we're good, if we were to do anything, we'd have to be in conjunction with the village, because they own the property.
It might be a matter of the Wellhead Protection Committee putting together the recommendations to the town board, which we then forward to the village.
Yep.
Perhaps. Okay, correspondence, wow. Letter from Huguen County Parks and Trails regarding contracting service from the town, from the town for the purchase of fuel and plowing bins, well, well. And I was hoping to have the highway superintendent be able to give thoughts on this. So this is from Mr. Doug Don Spreito, and Huguen County Parks and Trails Department would like to contract the following services with the town of Sterling for 2022, 23, and 24. Number one, the ability to purchase motor fuels from the town of Sterling through a process approved by the town. And I happen to know who this applies to, what applies to the Sterling Nature Center. And Paul Kelly is the site manager, so I said, Paul Kelly, what's the story behind this? Apparently, Paul Kelly, site manager for the Sterling Nature Center, goes to the town of Sterling's Highway Department and has a key and a code to get gasoline, I'll say, I think it's called motor fuel. And it probably amounts to 100 gallons a year. And the purpose of it is for the lawn mowers at the Sterling Nature Center, the weed eaters, the, they've got like a Ranger type little vehicle. So it's not that they use a lot of it. And what Paul said, Paul Kelly said, his knowledge is that prior to this town of Sterling, using the town of Sterling, oh, by the way, I didn't follow through with it. Then the county pays for the gas, okay, yeah, it's, I shouldn't make that assumption, but. So prior to that, Huguen County, the fuel truck from down near Auburn would drive, drive up to Sterling Nature Center to deliver the fuel. And it might be, I don't know, 10, 20 gallons, whatever, I don't know what the delivery was then. But it wasn't very cost effective, efficient from, it made more sense to just go here. Another, and one of the suggestions was to have a fuel tank at the Sterling Nature Center. I, I'm, it's not my area of expertise, but Paul thought one of the smaller ones is about 300 gallons. So that'd be about three years worth of gasoline sitting there. Another option would be for Paul Kelly to go to a local gas station and get ethanol-free gasoline. But he'd have to pay the count, well, the county would be paying sales tax on it. So apparently, that doesn't seem to be the best. So apparently that doesn't seem to be the best step. Again, so that's kind of a brief summary of the background of this. I would welcome Dan's input. As far as if he would like to continue with this, I just looks like would like, Doug would like to have something more formally placed. Any questions on that?
What's the reason why they stopped doing that? Dan stopped doing that?
Dan's not here, that's why, I, I don't know if he did stop, I don't know, that's the information.
You have any insight on this, Jim?
Obviously, no, from, from talking with Brian and Dan, they haven't stopped the process.
They're still doing it, they just wanna end the contract.
Well, or they wanna be able to, you know, when you buy fuel at different times throughout the summer, it might be different costs. And from the county standpoint, whatever your highest cost for the summer was, they, it was still better than driving a tanker truck from Auburn all the way up here to fill up four or five gallon cans. You know, three times a year, so. I, talking to Dan, and I don't wanna speak for him, he was like, well, but sometimes you get a little bit cheaper, so. So we gotta talk to Dan, see, it was a matter of, don't like, wanted to make sure he was charging the right price for the time they got it. Now, if they have a key and they have a push button, it seems like you'd be able to look that up.
Pretty easy, see when they got it.
But I don't know how the system works.
I don't either.
Maybe it just runs a random printout, you can't separate by user.
That's what, that's what Paul Kelly shared with me in terms of what he thought Dan's other being explained to him. That it was a lengthy printout to just, but you would think you'd just pull out someone's code number or whatever, but I'm just the messenger on this.
The system may be older and doesn't
Right.
have the
Right.
ability to separate by, you, you got to just go down there.
It seems to be the most cost effective way for taxpayers to get gasolines for the lawn mowers at the Sterling Nature Center, and that's.
That, that was how that all got started.
Right. Um, and there's any other comments, questions, again, I really would want to.
The logging services, I believe, are doing that now, when I spoke with Doug, he was expressed the same rate going forward that we paid before or something, or like.
Well, remember, it's not, Ginsfold Road is not Ginsfold, but anyway, it is now the Sterling Nature Center driveway.
Right. But it's, we were contracted last year.
I'm unfamiliar with that level of detail.
So again, I would defer to Dan on that in terms of what was done last year. So it sounds like we're not going to be able to, um, address that until we get some input from Dan.
Full business, Nick, say, we gotta get it GPS marked out.
Didn't someone say that the key has a GPS?
The village.
The village.
We were told by Jay Sawyer that the village has a GPS device now that would mark out the, they could use to trace out the storm sewer drain? You haven't, or you're in the process of getting it?
Bought into a system, so we can, that uses GPS to start cataloging where all our valves are. Fan holes, fire hydrants, and you can do it in layers. So we can have all shut off valves for residential or properties, we can have street shut off valves, hydrants. We're working with Huguen County and sharing it with them right now to mark all their superman holes and start to overlay information on it in layers. So if there's an emergency, they can pull up a layer, or if it's not an emergency and they gotta go to a house, they can, they can go right with their phones and, and find, be within a foot the Huguen, where the valve is instead of kind of trying to guess where it is. If it's something that the town of Sterling is interested in trying, well, I can see we can put another user on it. You know, if you want to try it, we'll get you on it for a little bit, that'd get fine if you know it's not the end of the world.
Okay.
Let me know. We're letting the county right now try it, see if they, they like it, and if they do, then we're gonna ask them to split the cost. But right now we'll pay it. Give them a chance to try it.
Is it, is it a fixed amount?
It's a, there's the amount in that we'll pay to get on it, and then I think the perpetuity of the monthly fee.
Right.
So Jay's been using it? Is he the one that's been using it? So I can ask Ken if it's gonna do what, he seemed to think the last meeting that it would do what we needed it to do. Wasn't, hadn't used it.
Jay, Jay has access to it, I don't know if he's been using it. Eric Horace, our GPW supervisor's been using it. Tom Getzmann, one of our GPW workers, uses it. And with some of the work that's been going on, they've been taking photos of the existing underground, and you can attach a photo to a map. It's, it's pretty versatile, and of the multiple ones we looked at, the employees thought this was the most huge improvement, and if they did, then I'm, I'm all game for them. I will probably never use it, so I let them know.
EA system? You know, this had, Pat looked forward, he's the audio expert here that I know of. Maybe there's others. I mean, single, I don't wanna give, put him under pressure, but. Uh, we looked at it, it's a much more reasonable one. But I do have a question before I do make that final decision, pull the, pull the string out. The time that we had, the loner here, I think Pat, you go over the sound.
Yeah.
Does anybody here from that time that we had that all set up, can give us kind of a testimony of how it worked?
Good, you can hear me.
Good.
So I'm, I'm, yeah, when I was in the back, I could hear it.
Okay, good, but I mean, obviously, that's what it's for, I mean, so people could hear it. Church mall spark. That would be twenty thousand dollars, you know, others, again, and that's what it's gonna be for, is the back of the room and the side, because we do want everybody to hear and get involved, so. That's the case, and I'm gonna go ahead and ask the board to pull the trigger on this one. It's relatively cheap compared to the other ones I've been looking at. Nothing cheap anymore in this world, as we all know, but. I mean, it's with tax and everything, it's well under four hundred dollars, so. One hundred dollars, still four hundred bucks, I get it, but I think it'll, it'll help along with.
That system will do what you need to be done, I'll leave more, but if they have meetings up in the upper garage.
It's very frustrating to sit in an audience in a meeting and not be able to hear the speakers, it's very frustrating, so I know, I think it's well worth it.
Yeah, like you say, you can spend up as much money as you want to on these things, but we don't need anything totally off the wall. We did spec it out to include some of the meetings that we've had up in the highway department up there too, so.
AD, that's all set now?
Oh, we can cross that off our list?
Former village plow truck, I guess the village is pricing went out. Gotta wait to see what we're gonna do on that. He's gonna be following the roads. John Paul agreement. Old state hold still waiting on her expansion in the state. What's that?
See, I'm confused, isn't that?
New York State, well.
New York State.
It's our transportation a lot. We have safety.
Sure.
Town has to make the suggestion because it's a little township during this speed limit. That was done a few months ago. Um, I don't think any else is happening, Aquila Village.
Well, it sounds like, while you're saying the village, but I kind of interpreted that as C two eighty of what you're gonna be.
What we discuss around this.
Right.
Um, still waiting for our Dan to say when they can get here with repairs. Good, where are we at with the zoning?
Okay, remember, it went to the two thirty nine committee, and seven of the eight, they suggested the town board accept. The one needed more details, and that went on the back burner, a hundred percent of our time is in the zoning commission meetings. And they're going from one o'clock until three, four. Has been on the wellhead protection overlay district, we're trying to get it because we wanna almost perfect, if that makes sense, we're trying to work out any bugs, make sure the wording's right, grammar, usage, spelling, that's the teacher part of me. So we're getting there.
Cleanup day was September tenth, we filled four, four dumpsters and two wood metal, so. I don't think this is as big a turnout as last year, but don't have a lot of people. Like we discussed, I think we should talk about, you wanna spring one possibly next year as well as. Agreement with Fairhaven Water District, that's, we're gonna have to meet with some other parties and get something lined up for that. New business, um, gonna have to have at least probably one more budget meeting.
Is that on resolutions or are you ready?
Change the thing, the parking signs on T Street. Talked about the CEO. No one applied to be a bar member, anybody wanna be a bar member? An application that, that's not sitting around drinking wine now. Um, the grant for Coloka's winery, we heard from Chris on that. ARPA money, ARPA grant money.
Yeah, that was item number fourteen in correspondence.
Yep.
And, well, we made the point.
Right, because you wrote it in afterwards.
Right.
Do I discuss something with it, or?
Well, um, remember, if, one of the budget meetings, Pat Crane, the bookkeeper, mentioned about ARPA. And we're all kind of like scratching our head, saying, ARPA? And so we wanted to know more information about it, thus I put the email out to you. Well, actually, I found out by an email due last February.
So everybody's asking ARPA, then you all did actually know about it. You just forgot.
Well, we didn't know a lot of the details because I have the email in front of me, and.
That was all done
Yeah.
twenty twenty one.
Correct, which is why when you said that, um, we, you'd mentioned it numerous times, and I'm going, huh, okay, I'm getting older, maybe I don't remember. But it may have been twenty twenty one meetings where there are those discussions, which means I.
There was never a lot of discussion about it, it was, nobody really had any plans on anything they wanted to do with it, and it was kind of just discussed that we'd let it sit there and use it if we needed to use it for Water District two.
Could you, you can do that, you don't have to dedicate it to something?
Not right away, no.
And you said you can let it sit there, do you mean that we have, let me go, I'll go to the paper, which we're eligible for, and this isn't ten dollars, fifteen dollars, it's like your municipality is eligible for two hundred thirty six thousand, hundred sixty three dollars, of which half will be paid this summer in twenty twenty one, and half in the summer of twenty twenty two. So did we actually receive?
Yes.
And what happened to that money?
It's in the A.
So it went into the general A fund?
Yes.
What line item, do you remember? Probably not, sorry. But Pat Crane would, probably.
Yeah.
But she's the one that wondered what we were doing with the ARPA money. And could we use the ARPA?
She was wondering about using it to pay the debt service for Water District number two.
Right.
You can't use it to pay the debt service, but you could use it to pay for items for Water District number two.
Okay.
To reverse the A.
So did we, have we received money? It sounds like you've actually received money. Did we see, did we receive a check or?
Just direct.
Money, direct deposit in this summer?
Yes. I believe we got this month, this year's payment last month. We got the twenty twenty one payment, one was in July, and the other one was later, because they took all the towns that didn't submit for the grant, they took all that money, divided it up between all the towns that did, so there was another, I believe it was seven hundred and nine hundred dollars or something.
Oh, okay, yeah, nine hundred sixty four dollars twenty cents, but what about, so a hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred sixty three dollars, seventy three cents, we got that, and it's in the A fund right now? Do we have to fill out some?
You have to every year, you have to go in and say if you spent it yet and what you spent it on.
Okay.
Or you can just put, you have to put it into a budget.
Is that something that the town board would be able to vote on and make a decision on how that money's spent this year?
Yeah, if somebody's got, I mean, like I said, at the time, nobody had any plans, we're looking at being, we knew with COVID and stuff, there was gonna be a shortfall in the Water District, so it can be used, at the time, it can only be used for certain things, Water District being one.
Yeah, so they've gotten more relaxed.
They have gotten more relaxed, and there's a wider spread on what you can do. You can do, um, grants within the town, or you can give a grant to another business or something like that. It was a talk, we have talked about this the other day, Chris.
With Nicola, the grant writer, so she is, she's working on this with Ontario, Ontario County as well, there's ways to structure it so that you could release that money to businesses, maybe it's a matching grant program or help local businesses, and then get that back on the sales tax, so it's actually released out of the fund that makes it available. Because otherwise, and then you can take that back on sales tax, otherwise, if you do create a loan type of situation, then it's locked into whatever they outlined, uh, those funds to be used in, but at least you guys get it back on the back end through sales tax.
Yeah, this is new to me.
Then those funds can go to whatever you guys want. It's kind of unique, and she has some ideas on that as well, so we're hoping that she can talk to you more. And build, build something for you guys to do competitively for businesses here and help economic development, you know, just give you some ideas on what you could do with it.
I mean, for the time being, I think it's smart for the winners, at least we can get the Water District two to fill a gap.
I think that's a town board decision. In other words.
No, exactly, but that, I mean, you can vote on it or.
Because what I'm hearing you say is you think it's a good idea to just let it sit on it, and I said, well, gosh, we've got five of us that participate.
Okay, but when this was originally done a year and a half ago, talked about, given the money, that's why it was left there.
Right, so my thought would be, maybe Lisa can pull up the, the old board resolutions from twenty twenty one, so we can see what the parameters were, and how it was put together. That make sense? Yeah, thank you for that, those thoughts, yeah, because, gosh, we've got money and.
Yeah, it's huge.
Well, we've also, we've also committed to a Water District that there's no, there's gonna be a known shortfall on. But I think it'd be unwise to spend money that we can use on that, and that's just my thought, but we need to vote on it. Make sure it's used appropriately. Make sure it's used appropriately. No parking signs. We'll put that on there.
Where?
No parking signs, path walk on King Street.
Right, yeah. I thought we were done.
Why is it on new business?
Did you go back on?
No, I'm just looking at, you, you said Arpa money.
Because that's number seven under new business. You had mentioned number five, bar member grant, so I was just like, okay, just trying to track.
Well, I'm going back number three, no parking signs, what?
I think it was discussed for the last meeting. To talk about it.
Right. All right, some resolutions. I get a resolution to pay the audit voucher.
I'll make that a resolution. Karen?
Yeah, please.
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, yeah.
Yes. All right, county plow contract. I get a motion to authorize a supervisor to sign the county plow agreement. With the exception that section number seven. Considerations, the word complete be added before trip. In both instances.
Wait a minute. Does the county know this? You've gotta have a, it's gotta be black and white.
I asked Kevin, Kevin said we could have a resolution to sign it with exceptions as long as these exceptions were made.
Okay, so it's. And I didn't talk to Kevin, so I.
It's gotta be written in.
They will rewrite it for the exceptions and that we can sign it. It's gotta be signed by October eleven.
So what's the point of signing it if it's gotta be rewritten?
Cause we won't sign it until it's rewritten.
Well, we guarantee that.
Wouldn't you want it back to white or something? I mean.
Yeah, that's hard to do.
Okay, my thought would be we're gonna be doing a special meeting for another, another budget meeting. Maybe put this on the agenda to address the county. Plow agreement.
What's the other meeting?
I've got my calendar out. And we know October eleventh is the deadline for the.
If we're gonna make exceptions to it though.
Right.
When are you gonna make the exceptions?
I don't know, Scott. I know I do not support. The current contract for. The two reasons, well, especially the one reason. That has to do with the ambiguity, unclarity of defining trip. Um, and then our attorney had a concern with the arbitration clause.
I can still make a motion. I make a motion for the resolution to accept the county plow contract. With the exception that in number seven, under considerations, the word complete is put in before the word trip in both instances.
Okay, so consideration.
Under considerations. The word trip, complete is added before trip.
That is.
Word complete is added before. The word trip in both instances. So it says per complete trip and a complete trip.
So it look like it's. Right, so.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna have a resolution to vote on this plow contract with a couple of exceptions to it. We can then forward it, would we forward that to you to present to the legislature and Brian or present it to Brian?
You send it to Brian and he'll have.
He'll have to get it to you.
That contract was established and written by some other people.
Yep.
Reviewed by the county attorneys. If you make any changes to it, it's really not, you should submit your changes that you're looking for to Brian. Yes, so he can go over it, but as it, as I understand it, the only difference in the contracts that will be seen. Is based on what the costs are, because everybody's cost for employees are different. The contract language, they're not gonna have twenty six contracts with twenty six different agreements. Just to that point, so if you have some changes you think you want, you should submit them so they can comment on it. That's, that's all I can tell you.
So it's basically our attorney who represents the town, whereas the county obviously. The attorney represents and will look out for the best interest of the county. That's.
You, you, you do what you do.
Right.
But I can't tell you that.
Right.
You know, it's gonna be changed.
Right.
That's, that's Brian Soper, our highway, county highway superintendent working with our county attorneys. And I, I.
Yeah, I don't believe it will either, you know, maybe we should vote on it.
You should get it in if you have something you're interested in, though I would recommend you get it in sooner than later. Whether you vote on it or just send it. Clarification or however you wanna deal with it.
Well, I think we need to have a resolution. If they make the changes, we're gonna sign it. Here, make these changes and then send it back. Or that it doesn't pass or something. Okay, and then also. Section ten, arbitration will be deleted. And the verbage will be changed. You got it wrote down?
Okay, so you're gonna pass a resolution to make these changes, but you're gonna. You wanna prove it with the changes.
With the change.
But what if they say no? But why are you even, shouldn't you say you would like these changes? It goes back to them? And if they agree to it, then it comes back to us. I don't know how you can agree to sign something though, like being black and white. I mean, we've been in a pickle before with that, that being correct. You know that. You know that.
But if. What I'm saying, if we send it to them and they say yes, we'll change it, then it comes back. And then we mull it over again and nope, it's still not good enough. Time's getting short.
Okay, why don't, how about this? I need to have a new budget meeting. Why don't we give them the, the changes what we want, since Brian's not here, because that's, we really needed his feedback. If he's gone and if we have it October fourth, that gives him a whole week. To figure that out. And that's Tuesday. But even if you guys had another meeting, I could.
Is your assumption, Jim, that this is take it or leave it?
I, I wouldn't say that. I just know that they weren't gonna have twenty seven different county highway contracts. My recommendation would be, again, you have to do what you want to do, is to get your, what you. Think you should be to the county as soon as possible and. Again, not going back and forth, if these changes are made, you will agree to it. If they're not, you're not gonna agree to it and the county will move from there. Or you have to decide if the county won't make those changes. Are you gonna go with it or not go with it? I'm, and I'm not speaking for the attorneys, I'm not speaking for. County highway, I'm just making a recommendation to keep the paper moving, because October tenth or eleventh will be here in a snap.
Yeah. I'll amend the resolution. To say that we will present to them those changes that we will sign it, present the changes. Brian Soper. Where is input?
Will it come from our attorney? Would we just go ahead and have Kevin draft this?
I can let him know what the changes are. We got the email from Kevin.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, he, that would be a thought and we've got our attorney involved with that. It'll be on the same page.
We can have Kevin do it.
Thoughts on that? That's Kevin.
Yeah.
I mean, who else is gonna do it?
I can do it. I mean, it's a header, send in the email to Brian and say we want these two things changed.
Right.
Have your attorneys draw it up or don't have them draw it up and.
You think Kevin would actually redo the contract with those changes and that?
Why pay Kevin to do it when the county's the one that presented the contract, that the county was right and figured out stuff that? But I don't think he would accept that we re, re, rewrite the contract. We're not gonna accept a new old.
I don't know if they would or wouldn't. I can't speak for them.
Jim just said you're not gonna accept.
Well, they said, yeah, about how many towns or about to ask them. You know, remember. Which is connect. Yes.
Yes, Jim.
So my recommendation is get those to Brian as soon as possible, whether they're handwritten.
Correct.
Tites. So you got three weeks from today. October tenth is the deadline. You can go to your attorney, he can wait a week, next thing you know, Arpa gets it, they can wait a week, next thing you know, it's October eleventh. That would be my, however you do, as you do. Get that information to Brian so he can share with the appropriate county. Staff that's worked with him there. They have not been, you know, intimately involved with that whole process.
Are you all good to meet contact and Brian? I'll contact him first in the morning.
Okay.
Tell them what we want changed. I'll put it in the email.
Kathy, us, board members.
This is what we want changed.
She's doing the reservation.
I'm gonna motion.
I'm gonna motion.
Resolution to allow me to present these changes to Brian Soper. Section seven and section ten, they have the word complete before trip. And the change wording in arbitration for the wording that was recommended by Kevin.
Okay, so if that happens. Then Helen, which is making the decision, will it know how?
No, it can't. It's gotta be, it's gotta be a public meeting.
I think even if we make this motion, then we have to have another meeting before the eleventh, correct?
And we know we're gonna have to have another meeting in the near future.
You're not back on third.
And we won't know when Brian will come back. Information.
Well, we're. We can't really pick the date before. We know who's gonna get the response. I can, well, we gotta make the meeting tonight.
This, this is best interest of people to get a quick response back to us because of the deadline approaching. So I don't think he wants to. I don't think we'll have to lay down a hint or a response.
Well, he's gotta present it to the lawyers, I mean, get your job. We've gotta do something. Now let's hold on. Time track as it stands, we either gotta change it or we've gotta hold on it. So we better do something.
Yeah, but there's so much variables. If we get to, Brian, if we make a meeting now. Right? We won't know when Brian comes back with the information. October eleventh, yes, is three weeks away, so not, like, there's too many variables. Do, right now. You understand what I'm saying? With, with time and.
Hold on, contract where it is? We get a motion in a second.
I don't feel comfortable with voting down it the way it is, especially when our own hired attorney has concerns that. Probably should be addressed as early as I. Sign the contract, that'd be my responsible action on the taxpayers' month. Say, you had a lawyer that agreed with it, what the hell are you doing signing it? That's right, that's where I stand. I speak for myself.
You don't get your own. I don't think, I mean, I, his, things with arbitration, I, hopefully we never have to go to arbitration. You never know.
Leave, what was your concern, sir?
Well, I said that if we don't accept this contract, you know, one way or the other, where it is now or if they change it. Then. We stand a chance of roads not being plowed where they should be plowed or on hot. So that's a safety issue, I think. So this contract's only for a year and.
We didn't put ourselves in this predicament. We're helping out.
Well, we're going for ourselves in this predicament.
I agree.
Right, so it's only a year and if it's not right, then we can change it back. We're not gonna lose that much money if we're gonna lose money.
Can we change it back? We can.
After a year, it's only a year.
No, I understand that, but we're even just asking for small changes and he already said, no amendments have been done. And so it seems as if, like, we're kind of in between the one and the hard place. You know what I'm saying?
I think the hard place would be if we don't accept.
Yes.
Let me see if I can help you. My recommendation, if you have concern, you need to send those to the county. The best way to do it is to, however you do it, is give Scott permission to send those things that your attorney has recommended. To Brian so we can get it in with the county. Get to hit it in front of, not doing anything or whatever. Then, what I said was we have a conceit then, okay? That doesn't mean people might not. They know the deadline's gonna, I'll tell you what, the town of Victory sent theirs to their attorney. They have a meeting this week to see what their attorney had to say. They'll probably do the same thing. I won't speak for them, but they haven't got their contract yet. It's best even if they're in writing by hand, scanned instead of via email. Or a paragraph taken out of, something scratched out in red lettering saying, put the word complete where we talked about doing it. Get that to the county. That, that's something you should be able to, and I'm not, you do what you do, but that's something you should pass tonight to get down, get through. So this stuff goes back and forth. At least see what they have to say. Maybe they will, maybe, maybe the change is so minor. That it'll be, uh, not inconsequential to the overall contract. Cause you're not changing the grade, you're not asking a grade to judge. You're not asking for the route, you know, those routes. You're asking for a couple of words, it sounds like. So that would be my recommendation, then you get that to, to Brian so they can look at it.
I think, I think what we're trying to do is eliminate as much as possible is self interpretation of what it says. There's a couple of things that could be. There's a couple of things that could be listed in the directions, one way or the other, that could make a big difference as a people's, that's all we're trying to clear up. That's it.
In, in the discussions that I have with the county, as your county legislator, the county's not looking to make towns and villages go broke. You know, and, and I voted for the one-year contract, because I don't want Victory or Sterling, because I also live in the town Sterling, so to be put in a hole financially. So this would give everybody, again, the contracts are all the same. The only thing that's different is the rate per trip based on what your hourly rates are for your employees, what's your, you know, what's your paperwork means comp, insurance, and so those vary. But it's still a trip rate, however the trip is, but, and the one-year contract is everybody's chance next year. You go through and go, geez, that didn't work, it's 25%, maybe it should have been 33%, or, you know, the flip side, as the county could say, well, maybe it should have been 20, 25% with regard, you know. We go count there, 15%. But again, there was another group that developed that. You're not looking to change that. You're looking to change some, some the things that may be inconsequential to attorney to attorney. I'm not attorney, I didn't stay at the Holiday Express, I went first to get the lounge.
I'll stay in the local express.
But it's more being logical. Ah, but you know, I, I, I think you need to get those too, Brian. Even, even considering the snippets of those paragraphs. Maybe it doesn't have to be the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, can we, we report, Brian, the email that we got from, from my lawyer?
Now, that's a phone call. You call your attorney.
We can, but it...
We can.
We can send them, like, what you want to change, we can have it.
Yeah, you can send them, yeah, but that's up to you.
And I got four.
I call our attorney all the time and say, hey, I want four emails, that good or bad? My attorney says, I want five emails. I write them like they're going to be posted in the paper.
Right. Can I second it or not?
How much money is this county contract worth to the town?
What kind? It's going to be a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-nine, whatever, for sure, and then whatever.
So we don't...
Possibly, the same as last year, it'll be a hundred, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
We agree this time, the town's going to use this one.
Yeah. Roads that were dry as old anyways, all our own roads. This, we gotta wait for... Make a motion, Lee. Either vote on it, or change it, or we need a motion. Can I second to make motions?
If you made a motion, I don't think you can.
I can't make a motion. Second.
If we don't act on it, it's...
We've got to do something, because it's, we're acting like who's getting put over the barrel here. It's going to be the people that travel the town.
They took the way Marco roads home last year, and that road does not get plowed the way it should be.
Right, so if we turn it over to the county and let the county do it, all the town roads will be like that.
You're, you're going to get phone calls.
Not at Dan's.
And we're driving over the county roads to get the town roads plowed. So the plows out.
What's your, what's your consensus, Joe? To plow the county? I mean, you guys, Kurt, Dan's not here, so you're deputy. Have you seen the contract? Have you, are you aware?
I haven't seen the contract, but there's one thing that I've heard earlier that would validate the, a trip would be to check our payroll. What happens if we go off during normal work hours?
Well, it's going to show you're working.
But they're wrenching on a truck, they're following roads. That road, the road.
I don't, I don't know how to crosscoat or stuff, but my guys go out and crosscoat file. We're wrenching on the truck, we're crosscoating.
Right.
Wrenching on the truck. We have crosscoats for all of that. We don't, oh, you don't do that. Oh, that's hard to manage.
If, if a meeting of time before October 11th to meet again, I, I don't see how it hurts to propose you changes, request them, and see what they come back with. They could come back and say no, and then the board can vote. They can also say, yes, we accept your concessions using the contract.
That's what I'm asking for, is, I mean, we had a motion, maybe it wasn't seconded.
And then, finally, secondly, it's not for this year, but perhaps for next contract. There's GPS systems now that can be attached to all these equipment, all these vehicles, and we can track a trip and what a trip is and where they were in real time and be able to validate and verify in the future. Not for this year, but just for the future.
Yep, that's been talked about.
Excuse me, is this a public forum now? Because I have a feeling too.
No, it's not. We've got to, we've got to, we've got to get moving. We've got to act on this. There was a motion made to allow me to give our thoughts to Brian, to have him add it to the contract, and we submit the contract to us, so that we can vote on that contract at that time. So fair enough. There was a motion made to do it, nobody seconded. We need a second, a second for the motion, now we need to vote on it. It's the only way it can get done. Can I have a motion to vote on the proposed contract?
I'll make that motion.
Anybody second it? All right. Is that way? Is anybody here that travels old state road? Don't call me when it ain't plowed. I get a motion, well, Miller Engineering's, I think that contract can go to your attorney before we vote on it. Six oh? We need a motion to do that, resolution to submit that contract to Kevin Cox.
I'll second.
Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. I get a motion to close the public hearing on local law number four, authorizing the award of purchase contracts on the basis of best value, otherwise known as the piggyback law.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. Can I get a motion to authorize all tree, all American Tree Service to remove the trees that border the Red Schoolhouse and the neighbor to the north, the King property?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have to put a value on that?
Yeah, I don't know.
How much was that?
Under six thousand, seven, five, under seven thousand.
Not to exceed seven thousand dollars.
Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. Number six, can I get a motion to authorize voluntary multiplex to upgrade the security system to the town hall and Red Schoolhouse property to include cameras out of the north side of the town property? In the very...
That was in a proposal. Was it in? I don't know if it's in a proposal, but we saw it sound like it.
Whatever it was, we discussed three.
At the proposal rate.
Under three?
Yeah. Right, because there were two or three different documents, so it would be the total of the three.
How about at the proposed rate?
At the proposed rate, yeah.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. I get a motion that this board apply to create the position of CEO trainee for the civil service with Cuban County.
And Pat asked if we could add and create the position if they approve it.
And create the position if they approve it.
I'll make that motion. Okay, question. Will there be a change in the salary?
No.
It's an hour, was it hour?
I don't think there's...
No, this is a, well, the thing, this is a civil service thing. Right, but I just, right, okay, because while there's some change in...
Charlie, I'll probably get ahold of you maybe one day this week, if you want to help me go over that, since it's a personal thing. It's on that form, all.
Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. Get a motion to authorize the bookkeeper to transfer a hundred and sixty-five dollars from account B thirty-six twenty point four, CEO contractual, to B thirty-six twenty point one two, fire inspector, and voucher was taken out of wrong account.
I'll make that motion. Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. I get a motion for this board to authorize the bookkeeper to abolish the following positions for civil service, fire inspector and zoning inspector.
I'll make that motion.
You second. Take a second.
For number nine.
Abolish the fire inspector.
I'll make that motion. Or you second it.
You second it.
I'll second. Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. We get a motion authorizing the supervisor to appoint Pat Crane as supervisor's typist effective September twenty-six, twenty-two, at seventy-six dollars and ninety-three cents per pay period to finish out this year.
I'll make that motion. Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. I get a motion to change the October meeting from October eighteen, or, do I go to eighteen to twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Change the October meeting to October twenty-fourth, and authorize the town clerk to advertise for such meeting.
I'll make that motion.
What's up for that?
Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes.
At the June meeting, we had the discussion.
Right, yeah, we did say, yeah.
But...
I get a motion to schedule a meeting on October... Does anybody want to meet?
The October tenth, Monday is Columbus Day.
I don't have a problem with it. Nobody else does, but that's...
I do, but it's on the...
You're off that, babe.
The eleven.
Eleven? Yep, motion to meet on October eleventh at seven PM to discuss the 2023 tentative budget and authorize the town clerk to advertise for such meeting.
I'll make that motion. Karen, yes. Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. I get a motion to pass local law number four. County of Sterling, county of Fugel, local law number four of 2022, a local law to authorize award of purchase contracts on the basis of best value. Section one, preamble. A, section one oh three of the general municipal law requires competitive bidding for purchase contracts and public work contracts, and as historically required, that such bids are awarded to the lowest responsible bidder whose bid meets the requirements of the specifications for the project. Section one oh three further provides that by enacting the local law, so providing towns and other municipalities may award purchase contracts which would otherwise be subject to the lowest bidder rule on the basis of best value as defined in section one sixty-three of the state finance law to responsive and responsible bidder or offer. The town board of the town of Sterling hereby determines that it is in the best interest of the town and its residents for the board to have the authority to award purchase contracts on the basis of best value. Section two authorization. On and after the effective date hereof, the town of Sterling may award purchase contracts, including contracts for service work, but excluding any purchase contracts necessary for the completions of a public works contract pursuant to article eight of the labor law on the basis of best value as defined in section one sixty-three of the state finance law to responsive and responsible bidder or offer. The election to award any such contract on the basis of best value shall be made by the town board, which authorizes solicitation for bids. In the event that no such election is made, purchase contracts will continue to be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder furnishing the required security. Section three, servability. In any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, section, or part of this local law for the application thereof to any person, individual, corporation, firm, partnership, entity, or circumstance shall be adjudged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid or unconstitutional. Such order or judgment shall not affect, impair, defect, or invalidate the remainder thereof, but shall be confined in its operational to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, section, or part of this law, or in its application to the person, individual, corporation, firm, partnership, entity, or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which such order or judgment shall be rendered. Section four, effective date, this local law shall become effective immediately upon the filing of the secretary of state pursuant to section twenty-seven of the municipal or rural law.
I'll make that motion. Karen, yeah. Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. Yep. Like to propose a resolution to go forward with helping Colopus acquire a grant and to write our letter of attack. The town, the town would get the grant on behalf of Colopus. We would accept the grant and I'll work it to...
Karen, yes, Lee, Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. Get a resolution that the town goes into negotiation for contracts for some motor fuel and a cloud contract with Cuban County for the Sterling Nature Center.
My thought on that, I would really welcome Dan's influence, because it impacts on him, but just...
Well, this is a, this is a motion to go into negotiation mode.
Okay.
That way, Joan, we've got moving forward, so we're not going to listen to December.
Okay.
I'll second you.
Karen, yes, please.
Yes.
Charlie, Joe, yes, Scott.
Yes. I mean, do you visit on the, all contracts, or we're not doing nothing? We'll put to the floor.
The county legislator gave you good advice five times in the role. They're not serving the community by not moving forward.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And admittedly, they went into executive session, came out with these ideas. Do what he told me to do. Get them into...
Do what he told me to do, get them into account. And to your concern, which is valid, I understand, you're worried, you know, what if we don't do it in time? You could be on top of the situation, if you had to, you could have emergency. You can do things over soon, you can figure it out and meet your deadline. You can tell them that you have to, you know, time constraints, so could they get back to you on these proposed changes as soon as possible? But keep, keep going forward, toss it in there, see what they say and work the problem. That's what Jim told me five times, that's a six. You know? You can do it.
Thank you Karen.
When did the town get the contract from the county?
Friday last week, wasn't it?
Wow, didn't give you much time off. Hold it calm.
And we just got a recommendation from our attorney today.
There, no, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't Friday, it wasn't, we got it, because we sent it to Kevin Friday. It was last week.
Well, well, they've been working on that all summer, so don't be misshued by the time of your session. I'm gonna stick up for the county here.
Right, no, we've, we've known what was, we've known what was the basis of the contract for a few months. We didn't get the actual hard copy, but we knew it just, yeah, you are, you are correct.
Negotiated through a whole team of people, that's probably a lot smarter than I am.
Anybody else?
I'd like to see a resolution to do something.
I would too, I, that's my next, get done with the comments, I mean, I, I'll redo my first one. Give me a motion that, I'll present these to them, if they give it to us we have the adjusted contract to what we're asking for, give me the authority to sign it, that we don't have to have a special meeting or anything. Kevin Cox, I asked Kevin Cox if we could do that, if we could pass a resolution to sign the contract with exceptions to it, and he said, yes, you can most definitely. That's what I did originally, and then that wasn't, I mean, nothing, nothing I put out there, we got one motion. And this, this isn't between the county and the town and, you know, who's getting one over on the other, this is somebody that's trying to get from Fair Haven to Oswego in an ambulance at six o'clock in the morning when the road's not plowed, that's who's gonna suffer. That's somebody who's trying to get.
This is privilege of the floor.
Sure.
Why don't we go back to the way the contract was written from before?
It's not.
Instead of doing time and material.
This isn't time and material, this is a hybrid between, this is a hybrid between the both.
Okay, why not take out that section?
The county, it's not, they're over there. The, the, that was brought up.
Highway guys are gonna be writing, I'm on Sterling Station Road at ten fifty-five.
That's time and material, that's not the new contract. Time and material would be every time they went out, every minute they were on a county road, they have to take out, they have to keep track of that time, log it, every time they turn the sander on, they remove sand, they have to keep track of it, every time they put fuel in the truck, they have to keep track of it. That's, that would be time and material, this is, this is kind of a hybrid between the time and material thought and the other one. At the last, when we met, when Dan and I went down to senate, we met with the other town supervisors, the other highway superintendents, we hadn't got the contract yet, nobody knew, when we were getting the contract the consensus there was, go back to the county and offer, we'll do the same contract we had last year with a percent increase, anywhere's between five and ten percent, that was up for debate. They went, presented that to the county, and the county said, nope, this is what we're offering, we got till October eleventh to sign it. If you don't sign it, we'll plow your roads and we'll hire somebody else to plow. So the old contract is not even an option, as much as we'd love for it to be, it's not an option.
Because they said so.
Because they said so.
Okay, what about shelter? What are you gonna do with the guys in your shelter?
That's the, that's in the twenty-five percent, that's what that's added in that part.
I don't know, highway guys, you have anything to say?
Twenty-five percent goes quickly, you got a rough winter. What about the bike trip?
What about, what about the hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're gonna lose in our budget? Close to it, we're guaranteed a hundred, ninety-nine, ninety-eight thousand, what happens when that's not in our budget? We've gotta make decisions on buying equipment or paying personnel or, tell you that.
You know, Jim, you asked me about how we, like during our scheduled workday, if we go out plowing, Dan keeps it detailed out, everything we did. But, by the way it sounds, that the only way he's gonna validate if we're actually out on the trip, is by a overtime. The check, check on payroll.
That's only if it's called in the question, Kurt, that's, he's not gonna do that every, everything, that's only if.
Do you understand my concern, I mean, there's a little bit of a gray area. So, what, what you have is a unit rate, and again, I'm not the guy that should be talking about it, but I'll share what I think I know. So you have this trip rate.
I actually, I actually know that, no.
So, if Dan writes down that you're out plowing at this time, then he, he's got a document, we do it a little different.
I understand, but that's what, that's what the administration came in where if the county says, well wait a minute, it was sunny in victory, why was Sterling out?
The county knows that the south end of the county, they have snow, we could have none, they know the law thinks that it.
Okay, well we enter it.
And what you're saying is Dan will be lying on his timesheet, and said you're out plowing on a sunny day. That's what you're saying.
What I'm saying is.
If he fills out a sheet for you Kurt, and says you're out plowing this day.
Those things exist now.
Right, they're gonna determine, so he, he fills out the, the trip ticket thing once a month, turns it in. It's gonna be reviewed by the county, someone at the highway department, yeah, I only know.
Right.
And, and they should be asking that question right away, not four months from when the first sheet was started. If there's any questions about that, they should be asking, but I, so you guys did some trying to turn in sheets to me, I look at it and go, alright, yeah, it pretty much matches the day the village is out plowing, and that one doesn't, you know what? If I were, I, you know, we're not gonna go through every, someone's not, at least the village, when you guys pop us out and say, oh wow, you're out plowing, maybe we weren't, maybe we were, because if it was time, you probably were. You know, and, and that's something that the county's gonna have to manage at the highway. They, and they shouldn't be telling you in March that your December report they have questions about. They better tell you a week or two after, in January, and you have questions.
Okay, but if we're on Old State Road, I know they go out on Old State Road at least five times, all the time. So, is that considered one trip?
Your, the trip thing, you know, the trip is though, is, is the route. That twenty-five percent was a group of highway superintendents, like I said, and people smarter than I. They came up with that twenty-five percent, yeah, could it get expended in a bad year? Absolutely. But if it's, it's not a bad year, okay, Ian, anything, so your trip limit, I don't know what, Sterling's is ninety, ninety some trips or something? No, but I mean for the kind.
The base.
Oh, I, I'm not sure, I would see the contract, and I didn't know anything about this twenty-five percent, I would say, I'm not, I was. You're the deputy though. That's why I'm here. So, so that, that twenty-five percent works in a couple of things for like, to cost those to, um, take them over and put sand and salt in the trucks, you know, that's not covered under the route. So they all sat down and figured out what over or, again, the, the thing that differs between each community is the, the unit rate or that trip rate, because your salaries could be different than Victory's, it'll be different than Iris, and so, uh, you know, you could have a fifty-eight percent markup on your unit rate because of your benefits package and, and that kind of stuff, or another community might have a thirty-seven percent. So that's, that part is gonna be unchanged. You know, and, and that's why I voted for a one-year contract, because I wanna make sure after a year, if it's not working or needs to be tweaked, and then, I think I said earlier, the twenty-five percent maybe should be third. Or we go the other way, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't go three years, because that doesn't, then we're broke. By both ends, because if we're paying out more then, because of the over, if we have to put certain, the county's put a certain amount of money aside for each town, should they go over? I don't know exactly what that sounds like, but that was another thing I wanted to know, is that we get, it should be using up, we had money aside, so that when we get these bills in June. We're not gonna hold it back. At, at the county. So each trips, but I, I do think that you just get the word changes.
So if a highway guy does serve who wants.
Lisa.
Wait a minute, just hear me out. They go out at four AM. Come back, go back out at ten o'clock, that's considered two routes, two trips?
I, I don't know how the trips were developed, since you're asking me a question that's really a Brian Soper question.
The trips, the trips will be determined by the town of Sterling.
Right.
The town of Sterling is gonna say truck number one's trip is this route.
I don't know.
That's right.
I don't know, is that.
Route's right.
Well, Brian said that one trip was on the county, anything after one trip is on the town.
If you're doing, if you're plowing Old State Road three times and you plow the rest of the town one time, that's one trip. If you plow the whole town three times, that's three trips.
Right, but we're eating the one road that we had to do twice.
That's, and that's where the twenty-five percent was figured in their charge.
If you're knocking down drifts or, or you decided you have to cut that, that's, it's, like I said, a whole group of people decided that that twenty-five percent was sufficient, I didn't, I'm not saying it's enough, that it was sufficient, and, and I was okay with it on a one-year contract for us to be sure that it is.
It looks to me, Jim, to answer your question, I, my best guess is it looks like if you take the amount of the contract divided by the amount per trip, it looks like it's on, based on seventy-five trips. Last year we did a hundred and thirty trips, so you're, you know, that's two-thirds, but I'm not sure if that twenty-five percent's figured in there on the base, if that's just figuring out.
Figured into the trip.
Yeah, figured into the trip, right, so, looks like seventy-five trips, last year if we plowed a hundred and thirty times, that's fifty-five more trips we get paid for.
You're gonna have nothing, you're gonna send some kind of.
Exactly, that's, I mean, it's do or die right now. Which motion did Jerk?